Your eyes will flash, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, vote please.
Percy.
Here.
Kirby Hall.
Here.
Van Dyne. Evans.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
Larry Hall.
Here.
Tudor.
Here.
Studer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
You. I declare the regular meeting of the City Council on February 21st, 2017 is now in session. Council got through the minutes of February 7th, 2017 before you.
Mr. Mayor, I reviewed the minutes. I did not find any errors, so I'm going to ask that they be accepted as presented in place of.
Motion by Alderman Studer. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Studer. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Studer.
Yes.
Tudor.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
All yes. Motion passed.
Our next item of agenda is our public hearing for annexation and rezoning. Alderman Studer, you got that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into the public hearing at 7:01 for discussion of the annexation and rezoning R2 County to I-2 City.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Studer. Roll call, vote please.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Studer.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Evans.
Yeah.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Tudor.
Yeah.
All yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. The public hearing for the annexation and rezoning of the property on the west of Route 53 on the south side of Strip Mine Road is now open. The petitioner is Barney Castillo, which I believe is here tonight. Yes, he is. The matter of this course right now is the annexation from R2 County to I-2 City. This is public hearing. This is a time where the public can interject their any opinions, profo, or whatever in regards to this rezoning at this time.
Steve Flynn, I've been kind of an interested spectator in this whole thing, and I also have known the Steels my whole life, but I'm not here to necessarily support them. I am here to support small business in Wilmington, as I've been a small business my whole life. Anytime we have an opportunity to acquire some land and use it for a better purpose like small business, especially something like this, most of you know in construction it's hard to find a little piece of property where we could put our business. Whether it's a concrete company or whatever, it's hard to find a portable piece of property. So I'm in support as a local businessman of acquiring land any chance we get, bringing it to the city, and making it easier for our businesses to use. I noticed the recommendation by the planning commission to rezone this if you ever sell this property. Things like that are silly, and it kind of hamper our business. You have an opportunity if the Steels were to move out of there for a concrete company to come in and store their forms there and store their equipment there. So I'm just here as a bystander, a businessman, saying that I support anything that we can acquire more land and that we can use the business.
Any other opinions before the public? I hope the council will... However you want to do it, okay? Yeah, we'll walk through that. What I'd like to do is, before I close the public hearing, Mr. Taylor, could you just kind of give a brief synopsis on the of the planning and zoning commission?
I might defer to Ken, because I was not at that planning commission meeting that evening, so.
Okay. One of the planning commissions on the street, did you give a summary of what the planning commission had?
Sure.
Well, from what I remember at the meeting, we had, you know, we were going over, because I wasn't at the prior one, but I was at the last one here, so. It's been an ongoing thing with him, and basically he's got a chunk of land over on Strip Mine Road, backs up to Wetlands, okay? He's in Will County right now, and I believe it's R2, you know. And so he wants a store. There's a couple of storage containers there, some trucks there and everything else, and the concerns from the public were we've got some turtles over there in Wetlands, we've got leaky fuel, and, you know, I mean, it went on and on and on and on and on. And so at the last meeting, it was, well, let's try to contain possible leaks and/or, you know, hazards that can, that can come about. Not going to store any debris on there. Landscaping and stuff goes in the dumpster on the site, right? Anything, gas, pesticides, this and that, is going to be in the containers.
If mine might help out here, page 10 and 11 of our packet, it shows what was the questions or recommendations and, yeah, and everything in red going down, so.
There's like six things from the IDNR.
Correct.
From the, from you guys from the planning and zoning, you guys did prove it unanimously. How many were?
We did, right. And there was, I think, I think there was six of us.
Five.
Five, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And, and we did. I mean, you know, I know there's some issues with Will County and this and that, and but I think if we take them in and we put some guidelines on it, restrict it a little bit, and say, here you go, if you follow these, yeah, let's introduce a new business. And we're not getting any tax money from her right now. You're going to get a few dollars if I annex it in, okay? Something is better than nothing. I'm just giving you my opinion on it. But at least you can keep an eye on, you know, what's there. Here's a set of rules. You annex in Wilmington. Here's a set of rules. Follow this. Otherwise, say, Will County, you guys have it. Who's going to, who's going to watch it? You know what I mean? You're still backed up to Wetlands, whether we annex them or not.
And there are no services out there, correct?
No, there are no services. No electric, no water, no sewer, not anything, nothing like that. There's an agreement to say, hey, if we, if you ever want to run electric or anything, there's a easement. I remember that. It's in there. I agree to that. I think that may have been.
The Wetlands.
I was just looking for a brief summary of that.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
Was there any issue brought up about how it would comply with our I-2 zoning, and are they going to be required to make any improvements?
No, right now. I mean, like you said, there's the six things from IDNR. Each issue that was there, Mr. Castillo gave a great explanation of how he was going to address those issues, and, you know, initially when it first came, everyone's kind of scratching their heads. This is a good idea. This is a good idea. The solutions he came up with were very good. I mean, they addressed the issues of IDNR, and it made everybody up at the table, feel, you know, confident that this was a good, good idea to allow to pursue. I mean, like you said, it's all written in red here, and it's pretty self-explanatory. I mean, he did a good job. It is floodplain. I mean, he's, it's not, it's in our future zoning, our caper has a plan, I believe it's set for R1, R2. Now, the property is, is almost too small to develop a house or anything residential on that, you know, with the floodplain there, so, I mean, what he's doing there is contained to a small space, and it seems to have it set up pretty well to, to address and move forward. If you guys are on board, you know, what he wants to do.
Mr. Castillo, would you like to address the council, please, because we are in this public hearing.
Sure, yes. So I do appreciate the opportunity to talk to you folks. We have been trying to take a piece of property that we recognized that wasn't that really good a piece of property, and we've made improvements on it in order to make it usable. When we moved in there, probably some of you folks know that it was basically a dump. And there's been scrap refrigerators and tin and all kinds of stuff that we've actually already cleaned out of there. And there's some more. If, if we are allowed to expand to the areas that have already been delineated, and we will clean that up likewise. And so it will be an improvement for property. As far as, I know there's concern, there will be tax income obviously for the city. We are ready. We took a look at our records, and we've already spent tens of thousands of dollars since we've been here in that piece of property because we were there with it, with the vendors here in town and the various areas and businesses that we do and that we interact with. So there is some benefit for us having business there. We do conduct business in Wilmington that normally we wouldn't conduct in business because we are there, and we have been there. We're very concerned with the ecology around. I mean, that's our business anyway. We deal with that. On a lot of different projects that we do, we deal with the ecology and trying to make things better for water, for drainage, for animals, and that's why we were ready to really stipulate almost everything IDNR was requesting. It seemed reasonable to us. We were really going in that direction anyway, to be honest about it. And so we wanted to take care of what is around us. We don't mind doing that. We feel nice. So our workers are very well-trained, almost all family and friends that we have known for years, and we're honest. I know not everybody can say that about them, and we feel very good saying that, that we are honest in the work we do. We will treat our neighbors nice, try to get along with them, work with them, just like we have been doing here, very patiently trying to work with the city, and we understand there's decisions to be made. You gentlemen and ladies are looking forward to the future. We understand that. We can understand the concern and the desire to try and feed everything in a row, so we do appreciate that. If there's any questions that I have an answer.
I just have one question for me. What, why, why did this transpire? Why did it come from county? I know county basically told you the best thing to do is to annex into the city. What, what were the issues that led to that decision to be made on your part?
Yeah, so actually I, the reason I came to do it is because Kimberly Phillips from Will County said, we recommend that you do that. But I told her, I said, what are my options here? To be honest, when we purchased the property, we were told that it was zoned something different. And then when we found the way it was zoned, it was a surprise to us. Anyway, that being said, we tried to deal with the situation that we have. And when we talked to the county, because they said, you can't do this, you can't do that, you have to do this now, we said, well, you tell me what to do, and they said, we recommend to you, this was Kimberly Phillips, that you talk to Wilmington and see if they will annex you. She said, we think that'd be better for us and for them and for you.
That R2 zoning for county, that's actually residential as well, right?
That is.
That is.
Yes. And so that's what we did. We had some violations which started this whole procedure, and so we have did what they told us to do, to clean up those violations. It was dirt that we had put. I didn't realize that it was an official wetland. So we had a load or two of dirt. We pulled that all back out. We did have some scrap on there from the property, and so in some other places, and we never were intent on storing it there, and we moved that out, and we did that right away. And they were happy with that. They came and looked at it, and they said, good. So they were just, dirt actually just waiting. I talked to Tawanna Reed every couple of weeks and update her as to where we are. Obie's been sending her some messages, telling her to verify that, yes, we are waiting on whatever the procedure is going to be. And so you know, Will County, I guess, for some reason they felt that it would be a better fit.
Are you, do you own that piece of property now?
Yes, we bought that piece of property.
Was that part of the Brandon's property over there?
It was, yeah.
Are you interested in moving farther towards the city? There's more lots there that are available, right, that aren't in?
Well, to be honest, I was, but I'm not now. When I found out, when we, we had to hire an engineer to do a wetland delineation, and I don't think I want to go that way, to have to spend all the expenses, whatever it would be, if they would approve, but you can get rights to work in the, in the wetlands, but almost all that area is that. So, you know, I think that's kind of a lost cause for us to try and do that.
So you don't see a future for the rest of anything that's going to stay wetland?
At this point in time, I can't say that I do.
Yeah, I feel like that, I'll put the primary structure up. Currently, you just got trailers.
Yes, I had, I had mentioned to the, the planning commissioners that if they want me to put a, a structure up, I will do that. Right now, I don't have any plans to do that. But in the future, if the permit allows, I would be willing to put the structure up, yes.
I think if you wanted a structure, then that would have to go through planning, zoning, and, and here, false or correct. Get a permit and everything?
I don't know if that was qualified under the site plan or not, if it was basically zoning that I do. I don't know if the preliminary and final site plan for the building, but just like, like you said, if it's just a warehouse type building. I don't think so, but I'm not.
If it's going to contain the air from our electricity, it's got to.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Does it got to go for?
If you're, if you're going to have plumbing or electric in here, it's got to be.
Well, I know it's got to go for, through the building department. I don't know. It's got to go through planning, zoning, and the city council for building. On that property, I don't think so.
No, I wouldn't think so.
You could, if you wanted to, you could put it in the annexation.
Or you could put it in the annexation.
And I do have one question for you, sir. It's going to be storage, or you're going to, you're just running your business out of that area?
The, the reason that we purchased that piece of property was to have, in landscaping, we do have neat area outside for outside storage. And that was the idea. I mean, we have pallets of pavers that we use for patios, block walls, and so forth in there. We need a place to park our equipment every evening overnight, and we go there, you know, take it to work with us through the day. And we need a place for our hand tools to be stored securely. So that's why we have the containers there completely in case, and as was mentioned, any of our other liquids and so forth that we use, you know, lawns and gardens, that's, that's where we put it in there. We like to have everything nice and neat and orderly as much as we can, so that's what our goal is, and it was when we started there.
Any other questions or? Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, your motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing at 7:17.
A motion by Alderman Larry Hall, but it was second. Second by Alderman Kerwin. Can you roll call, vote please?
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Tudor.
Yes.
Studer. Percy.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
All yes. Motion passed.
I'll cut out here. Thank you for the report. And I'd like to read a proclamation. In this proclamation, whereas Gary Van Dyne began his career with the city of Wilmington on March 16th, 1988, as the city's water meter reader, a long time ago. And whereas Gary has faithfully and conscientiously served the city of Wilmington and its citizens for 29 years, during which period of Gary's numerous projects were initiated through his leadership, which will continue to have a revitalization and growing impact on the city of Wilmington. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, and Gary has worked constantly for the betterment of the Wilmington public work system which contributes to the health, safety, and comfort of this community. And whereas the city of Wilmington has benefited greatly because of Gary's leadership in guiding engineering, utilities, streets, solid waste, equipment services, and public work administration divisions, he genuinely cares for his employees by ensuring all necessary safety standards, standards are followed. And whereas, on behalf of the entire city council, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Gary for his loyalty to the city of Wilmington over the past 29 years, and which in much happiness as it begins a new chapter in his life. Now therefore, I J. Marty Orp, Mayor of the city of Wilmington, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 28th, 2017, as Gary W. Van Dyne Day. The city of Wilmington and all citizens and employees to join me and the city council in congratulating Gary for his meritorious service, loyalty, and dedication he has rendered to this community. Gary, I mean, I've worked with Gary, I don't know, a long time.
Yes.
And we've done a lot together, and I'm very, very appreciative of what Gary has done for the city and also for his community. I know he'll continue to do throughout these years. So I'd like to present with you this plaque, Gary. It says, "For 29 years of outstanding and dedicated service, your commitment excellent to excellence has left a lasting mark, mark on each of us. Thank you for touching our lives in such a positive and meaningful way. You will be greatly missed. Have fun and enjoy the years ahead." And a heartfelt thanks from the mayor, city council, and citizens of Wilmington. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Alderman's council, the mayor, previous councils, for putting, you know, giving me, giving, giving me my 29 years with the city. I'd also like to thank the city crews, the administrations. I'd like to thank the girls at City Hall. We were all in this together, so. He had to pay calls just like I did every night. Well, I know, but I mean, I like. What are you going to do?
They're all from Pinterest, right?
Everyone wants to ruin this camera. Better give them the link to my honey donut. Your photo, Bob. Come on out, Jack.
Is it your pink?
Not every day you.
What? Is it your pink phone?
Yeah, shoot quick. Yeah. Question ahead. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your services. Come on. Hey, you still got two weeks to go.
Is it not 28 today? It's the 21st.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a week.
Again, thanks, Gary.
Good year. It's retirement mode, buddy.
You know, it wasn't uncommon that I remember, I think it was one time it was in February, probably built home, and the guy's been out plowing the snows and getting everything ready to go, and I can't get Easter. He's had a watch, man. And I think they've been out here for 13 or 14 hours, and I go out there to look to see what's going on. Well, Gary's in the hole, so I can't really talk to him right now because Gary's in the hole, but that was who Gary was. Gary was never one to stand around. If somebody needed help, whoever it was, he was always there. Tremendous, Gary. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. One more item on Mayor's Report. May 2nd, it's Wilmington Middle School. Looks like we've got speakers presented with the special guest speakers, Lloyd Wade. It's on heroin from the Wilmington Coalition. Probably something that's been a huge concern not only in our community, but many others. So we have the opportunity to go from 6:00 to 8:30 on March 2nd. That's off the list for the Mayor's Report. Do we have any citizens' comments today? Seeing none, we will move on. All right. Planning and zoning commission, we have several topics on there. I believe the first one is on the Adair Ridgeport property.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You got that one?
Yeah, I got that one. May I approve your ordinance number 1702, has 21, has 01, an ordinance rezoning certain property? Head number 0317163000050000. Owner, Adair Ridgeport Industrial Partners LLC.
I have a motion by Alderman Evans. Do we have a second? So I can second by Alderman Kerwin. Discussion. Frank can bring everybody up to speed on what this, what they think about.
Yeah, I mean, doing an update, we're required, the council is required to have a new zoning map that's out there by the end of March of each year. In reviewing it, we found there was one property that had been annexed into the city, but for whatever reason, the actual rezoning ordinance from residential to the industrial classification was never announced. So we're in the process of preparing our new zoning map, which will be coming to you next month. Since housekeeping won that, it's something the council had already acted upon. We just need a separate ordinance for the zoning.
Clear. Explain to them. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Evans.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Tudor.
Yes.
Studer.
Yes.
All yes. Motion passed.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve or deny the planning and zoning commission's recommendation.
Hold on. One or the other, right? How do we do the motion? Is it approve or deny? Any other motion like that?
You should either make a motion to approve or deny, and have discussion on whether you're going to approve or deny it. Now, if you do approve the PZC recommendation, the proposed action is to rezon the property. And you can't impose conditions on a rezoning unless you have an annexation agreement. So we would need to prepare an annexation agreement based upon what the city council's desires are in terms of the six requirements by IDNR and then the three additional requirements that show up on page 13, I believe, of the PZC report at the very top. So first of all, the reason is to determine if you want to further the total or add any other requirements on. But then, if you want to impose any conditions whatsoever, you can't do it unless you have an annexation agreement agreed to by the city and the petitioner first.
We can, we can move forward with approval or deny. You can make a motion to approve the PZC recommendations, but during that time of the, after the motion, if we still make recommended changes if we so desire? I mean, under that discussion, under that debate?
Right. You make, you make a motion to approve it, and you have discussion, and you can determine if you want to make any amendments to that motion or those requirements.
I would stick with the approve first. We'll go that way.
I move to approve the planning and zoning commission's recommendation for the city council to annex the Castillo property and zone the property up to I-2 light industrial subject to the conditions that it be operated only as a landscape business and not other business entities that are applicable to the I-2 zoning. Comply with restrictions which were agreed to by the petitioner for the IDNR issues. Based on the memo submitted, the property would revert to uses consistent with R1. Zoning at any time which Mr. Castillo and/or his family no longer own and operated the business, and he would be required to grant the city any easements needed in the event that water and sewer service is extended to or beyond his property.
A motion by Alderman Kerwin. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Percy. Discussion. Any discussion?
What else needs to be added to this for us to be taken care of?
Well, unless, I think, if Mr. Flynn brought a valid point on the R1 zoning, I don't see how that would even meet the R1 zoning requirements, or even if that would even fit in our comprehensive plan.
We have no, we don't have one out there.
I mean, I don't, I don't think, in our comprehensive plan, I don't think the strip mine is being residential property.
I thought that was always in our comprehensive plan. For those lots that were.
Right. I mean, that's, that's what I see as far as issues that were brought up. I think there's other issues whether, you know, do we, do we annex this property or don't we annex this property? A lot of concerns have been addressed that way, so. Yeah, I mean, if, if there's any type of recommendation that needs to go, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make it R1. I'd keep it as I-2. I've even, I have, I have some concerns over the conditions, okay, because to put I-2 zoning, which is fine, but to put such a narrow restriction on it, that's all it can be. And, and there's nothing against the planning and zoning commission, but I just, you know, sometimes things change.
I would just like to maybe ask our legal counsel that, is there any, would the city have any future liability if we annex that property and it becomes an issue with the IDNR with any pollution? Are we going to be responsible for any cleanup?
That's, yeah. Yeah, you're very right, because that's, that's where it's going to go.
Is that why the county doesn't want it?
I'd would like to take a look at that.
if you take action and zone it a certain way, probably a really big property owner that would be subject to any penalties, not so much the city, but something that probably would not hurt further investigation. And in any event, if you impose any conditions, you're gonna have to continue it to another meeting. So if you can have an annexation agreement drawn up that would encompass the city council's desires in terms of what conditions to put on the property. So that's something I can look into regardless of liability between the elements that we've brought up.
Yeah, I'm not trying to keep someone from their own business here in town. I'm not trying to discourage anybody. I just want to make sure that we do this correctly.
And I think, Mr. Castillo, even a lot of concerns, I mean, even I have those concerns with the, what the business is and how close it is to what that is. Or, you know, who's the responsible party? What happens down the road? Does the county make in the city the responsible party because of the issues that were there? It sounds like issues you weren't even aware of when you purchased the property. Those are concerns a lot of us have and even myself, you know, has.
We have an abandoned gas station in the community right now. We're trying to figure out how to take care of it.
So we have, yeah, general things. I see what the planning and zoning commission was trying to do, and I prevented them, made them for trying to make sure that everything could work. Sometimes I have things when you deal with annexations of property, and I've always felt this way, that annexation of property shows benefits to the city. And I understand that you've done business within the city and stuff like that. Benefits from an annexation standpoint tend to be generally larger. From the city standpoint, where the benefit can be to get to a true benefit where it really impacts and benefits the citizens of this community. A property tax increase or adding city property tax to it isn't really that much of a benefit. That's why I was hoping for structures and stuff like that. But it sounds like you're quite limited in what you can do based on everything that's there. But seeing how this is with just the landscaping business and the R-1 zoning, I don't want it to go to R-1. If we was to keep the annexation and they were to sell the property, because it's, it benefits Mr. Castillo down the long run if he chooses to sell his property. I mean, you're gonna sell your property, I gotta sell it as R-1. There's nothing there. There's no benefit. So, you know, maybe it's transpired to another company that's a landscaping business. If you're doing landscaping business there, you're able to sell. If you can't, if you gotta sell it as R-1, where's your benefit, you know, down the road? So, maybe that needs to be changed. Needs to be readdressed. I-2 has, you know, very broad usage. I think one of the uses under I-2 is just accessory use. You know, it's kind of very broad and vague, but that's just the way our planning and zoning is. And we're trying to narrow that down to landscape business and know any other residential, maybe something other would work there. And I don't know how those, John, if we drafted that up in an annexation agreement, if any business was to change that met the I-2, would they actually have to come to council for approval? Is that how that would have to work? Would you draft up an annexation agreement?
You can have a different way of playing around the language of the annexation agreement. What's the matter with quarters of action here? This thing obviously needs some more work. How do we, how do we delay this to get, have time for our council?
I think what needs, yeah, I think what needs, from the council's standpoint, you need to, I guess, one, I think if this is worthy of annexing into the city for one, and then two, make the determinations on what changes need to happen to this property or what restrictions the city would want to be put on this property for the annexation to happen. Once those restrictions are put on there, naturally has to be agreed upon by both parties. You can even forward from that. And that's what John said, if any changes are to be made, you won't be able to move forward at this meeting. Would have to be done at the next meeting. So changes can be inputted into the annexation agreement. The determination can be made by both parties to agree to those changes. Am I correct on that?
Correct. So the city council can decide what restrictions or conditions it would like, or you can also mandate that or turn back to PZC for other considerations as well.
What did the IDNR, Mr. Castillo, have to say about, like, they're saying about with the snapping turtles and everything because we're being on the extensive list? Did they come back with anything? Right here, on June 23rd, is when I went in there and they did the survey.
Yeah, so snapping turtle is not, in the full report, it tells you that the snapping turtle, that those are the eggs they found, those are not endangered. So they did not find any evidence of any endangered species on the property, but they feel that they know that they're in the wetlands and to the area to the south and west. You know, so they've seen them at some time here. So, but they have not seen them on our property.
You consider they have six state listed threats of endangered species, what they found?
Yes. Yes. But not on our property.
That was, that was in the wetland.
Mr. Mayor, do we have a motion right now?
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the planning and zoning recommendations. And we can move to, you know, to not approve those. And then I could move to, remember I, John, stop me if I'm wrong. After that happens, let's say if the council moves to approve them, then we continue on with the rest of the stuff. If the council chooses not to approve it tonight, the council has options to A, rewrap language that would meet criteria for the council, or two, send the motion, make a motion to send it back to planning and zoning commission for review. I think if we do that to planning and zoning commission, I think it would be wise from a council standpoint to make sure that we address concerns from a council standpoint to the planning and zoning commission, so they can understand what the council's looking for to be able to move forward with the annexation. And I think that would be the proper way to do that. Frank, do you have a?
Well, Mr. Mayor, what we could probably do, you know, the third option, if you wanted to table this evening, and then I could get together with Mr. Urban, we could draft an annexation document, bring it forth to the council at the next meeting, hopefully by the 7th, not by, by the time of the 21st, that the council would have the document with which to act on. It would encapsulate the zoning, the conditions that they've talked about. So it's very sad you can't do a street zoning with a condition that's contract zoning. We can do that under the guise of an annexation agreement, which gives you that flexibility.
Can we withdraw the motion and then have a?
Well, we can. Basically, all it would really take is a motion by two aldermen, motion to table, and second, and then the matters before us would be tabled until the next meeting. And that's all it takes. Just so you guys, you know, based on common procedure, if anybody that's here on the council makes a motion in the second, and the motion is actually tabled, there's no votes, and it's tabled until the next council meeting.
Okay, so we can make, even with this motion up now?
Correct. Correct. What would happen, and this is gonna explain everything, is if you was to make a motion to table somebody's second, it'll matter to the discussion, and this would stop, and we would just move on.
I make a motion to table this till the next meeting.
I make a motion to table, right on Larry Hall.
I second.
Second by Alderman Studer. Okay, the motion is before us is been tabled. Discuss at the next meeting.
In the meantime, we'll draft an annexation agreement.
Yes.
What does Castillo's bring back to the council?
Let's get something comfortable with here.
Yes. Okay. Still working process, Mr. Castillo. I know it's taking a little bit longer, so.
Correct.
Just basically to table it.
Exactly.
So the matters before us on items number three and items number four, based on the table of, moving forward. The next scheduled meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 2nd, 2017, at 5:00 PM. Committee reports building grounds, parks, health and safety. Alderman Persick?
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, March 15, 2017, at 5:30 PM.
Water, sewer, streets and alleys. Alderman Studer, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, March 15, 2017, at 6:00 PM.
Please, it has to, Alderman Studer, Alderman Studer.
Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 14, 2017, at 5:30 PM.
Finance administration and land acquisition. Alderman Studer, Alderman Studer.
I move to through the accounts payable report dated February 21st, 2017, in the amount of $230,355.38, and the January 31st, 2017 collector's report in the amount of $40346.97, as presented by the city account.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Studer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
All yes. Motion passed.
Item number two has been tabled till the next finance meeting, so it won't be brought up tonight.
Okay, item number three. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2017-03, a resolution for a temporary loan between funds.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Studer?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
No.
Kirby Hall?
No.
Studer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
By yes to no. Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 21st, 2017, at 6:00 PM.
Ordinance license, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, approve ordinance number 17-02-21-02, an ordinance establishing travel mill and lodging expense reimbursement regulation for the city of Wilmington, Will County, Illinois.
I'll second. Motion by Alderman Evans, do we have a second?
Right here.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. Any discussion? You have the motion.
He's got the motion.
Basically, on this is state statutes adopted, state adopted a new statute as it relates to travel mill and lodging expenses, and it has to be defined, I think you have the budgetary items too, reimbursable. So basically, we're mandated to create this ordinance. So that's why you didn't have to see any previous meetings, because it's pretty much a mandated statute, and we have to comply. All right?
Check crew.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
All yes. Motion passed.
I think we have the next one.
All right, I got it. Hi, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 17-02-21-03, an ordinance declaring a surplus certain equipment and authorizing the city administrator to dispose of said equipment in a manner in the best interest of the city of Wilmington. Motion by Alderman Kirby Hall, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Tudor?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yeah.
All yes. Motion passed.
All right, next up, Alche. First reading, divisions to chapter 118, peders, solicitors and street peders. Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 14, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Personnel collective bargaining, Alderman Larry Hall, Alderman Persick.
Nothing to report this time, Mayor.
City of Marriage Report, Senator Paul Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Long list here, but not too much to report on. High speed rail, really only three projects moving forward at this time. North Cape and Key Street, First Street and Water Street, currently we're working on trying to negotiate bond agreements with the contractor of the city before he works forward on those projects. There was payment court done out there on Water Street, Cape and Key Street, so that stuff will be analyzed to determine what kind of payment we have out there currently, the subsidies and whatnot. So should anything happen to those real estate, it's working, you know, turned back to as far as the payment rehab and whatnot. Should that occur, anyway. I did receive the revised North Cape and Key Street railroad crossing plans yesterday. I haven't began to review, but there was some other, other current smaller stuff in there with some of the commercial properties over there that I, I didn't take a look at. There's a lot of stuff to have them revised, but I haven't got as far in with the plan with the high speed rail, the city utility conflicts, they have the nine conflicts that are out there on our local streets with sewer and water. Currently, right now, attorney Urban is reviewing and negotiating those license agreements with them right now on all those projects there. Fifty-three in South Arsenal, still ESI and Austin Tyler working to establish their start date for the water improvements out there. Very short timing on what's gonna take to do that, so we're, I know the, Austin Tyler's trying to hold off a little bit till the weather actually gets warm enough to do more than just water making improvement out there, so.
Seventy degrees out.
Yeah. They can do it two days, but they want to hire a diet bag of work and then send it back home for a while. Hopefully that weather holds on. Fifty-three in Peatown, Frank and I are working with, I have to schedule meetings to sit down and discuss the funding breakdown for the remaining portion of our EDP costs out there. See what the transfer to this project to help pay for that. Economic Development Report, Ridgeport, Bunk Easement, the plans have been finalized, or I should say, they provided a final one, so there's some revisions need to be done to reach agreement with the parks and the Elian and the city in terms of location and the railroad out there potentially running their storms or parallel to this, so trying to get everything in front and take care of that. Once that is determined, we'll be able to get the site easement prepared to finalize the layout for that work. Project Down, Project Hot Dog, the panel laws you can see as you go out there are going up. The contractor is also starting to work on relocating the water sewer that is currently under that foundation, so that work can start at the end of this week, early next week. Project Charlie, just received advice plans. Most of that stuff has been finalized, but there is a few items that need to be confirmed with as far as utility layout on those plans, which I will get to in the next week or so. World Foods, really nothing different going on out there. They're still working on a plan to pass out a chunk for review of the rehab they're doing inside the building itself. So I don't know if Marshall and Gopinewine gear create or buy. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. City of Marriage Report, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ed, nice meeting and greeting the executive director of the Island City Park District. Met with Beth McCloskey from IDOT, John Jerome from the Union Pacific Railroad to discuss the high speed railroad. Attended the freight advisory committee meeting in Will County CED and attended a freight advisory forum hosted by the CED at Joliet Junior College. Attended the symposium on the Cankey River at Olivet and Avenue University. Met with a cost reduction consultant to assess possible opportunities and what we can in our operations to see where we might be able to save a few dollars here and there. Attended a meeting of Route 66 Red Carpet Committee. Met with Carrie Ansem in the College of Vegas today to discuss planning and land use issues of Ridgeport. Attended a meeting in the Royal Illinois Commercial Association of Realtors today up in Oak Grove. And attended a monthly meeting in the Downtown Merchants Association. And then also working with CMF coordinating the downtown study.
Don't forget, much California, too.
Took a few hours off.
Thank you, Frank. State of Marriage Report, Mr. Urban.
Mr. Mayor, I have, in the last two weeks since the last meeting, prepared a couple of, a few of the ordinances that we'll be reporting tonight, and also a resolution for transferring funds. I've also been working on open lands. There's a closing set for tomorrow for the purchase of the five blocks on the island. So tomorrow, obviously, we should be full ownership of the property. That's the same way we work.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Oh, yeah, the signs are working, and then there's still be a challenge. Oh, yeah, the, the signs are working, and then there's still be a challenge. I did, Alderman first had asked me about the signs up there. Um, I did talk with some of the residents out there the first week, they were doing well. Um, now they're having issues again. I have reached out to Elian Partners, I think we narrowed it down to, um, narrowed down even farther, so, uh, Elian Slowmo especially is, uh, very attentive to what's going on out there, uh, and is doing everything he can from his standpoint to help us to ensure to minimize, uh, continue to minimize the trucks. So we're still having challenges. I think, since we pretty much want confidence, so we're open to reach right out to them.
You got, you're up down to.
Yeah, that's.
Old bad guys.
They, uh, I think it'll kind of work in our favor. They're trying to create a board in one of these companies. Uh, the vice president's actually going to be on this board out there with Elian Partners. And, uh, yeah, I think, uh, it'll help. But I think what we also need to, and I need to talk with, uh, Koby, is we need a much larger, uh, grass camp sign on the, uh, uh, station there, so we'll get with, uh, Ridgeport and them guys to get that.
On the mast side, probably.
Yeah, the mast side, it needs to be much larger, maybe, we might have to change the, uh, reader board to indicate where the grass camp is, so.
Pick it up.
Narrow maybe, un-warned.
We may need to put it on like, I don't know, but. The light, the light more than. That one of those things, like, posters when it goes there. It, it, like I said, I knew, you know, even I knew when we put the reader boards out, I knew it would help, but I knew it'd still be, there would still be challenges. Uh, and, and that's, you know, like I said, we can't get in the mind of every, um, truck driver, we can't get in the mind of any driver, because there's, there's regular drivers,